Oh, what the heck, there's a basketball game tonight. Welcome to the Monday, April 7th edition of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please fill their role?
Sorry?
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Clemens is absent. Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Powers.
Here.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Here.
Alderman Levert.
Here.
Alderman Buber.
Here.
Alderman Walther.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will begin tonight with a Arbor Day proclamation, which I will read. There's no action to be taken on this. Whereas Arbor Day will be officially observed in the state of Illinois on Friday, April 25th, 2025 by proclamation of the governor, and the planting of trees on Arbor Day is a traditional activity throughout the state and the city of Lake Forest. And whereas Lake Forest, with its environment of natural areas, is particularly dedicated to the observance of this day and has consistently, throughout its history, enacted ordinances to preserve its trees and other natural assets. And whereas citizen groups, garden clubs, and private and public institutions have actively supported preservation efforts and the renewal of natural areas through tree planting and landscape projects. And whereas the celebration of Arbor Day 2025 in Lake Forest will include the distribution of tree seedlings to the public at designated locations. And Arbor Day 2025 will be celebrated throughout the day in programs at schools and other locations and at the City of Lake Forest Municipal Services Building 800 Northfield Drive on Friday, April 25th at 10:00 a.m., where the city's official Arbor Day tree, one oak tree, will be planted. And whereas trees in our city, wherever they are planted, increase property values, enhance our business and residential areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy to gladden the hearts and promote the environmental well-being of the present and future generations. And whereas the City of Lake Forest has been recognized as Tree City USA for 45 consecutive years by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now, therefore I, Stanford Art Tech Mayor of the City of Lake Forest, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the City of Lake Forest. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's forestry program to plant trees on this day and to join in the celebration ceremonies. And witness hereof, I have herundert set my hand and have had the seal of the City of Lake Forest affixed this 7th day of April 2025. Thank you. We will move on to comments by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Good evening. I have three items for my report this evening. First, for what I think is the third month in a row now, city staff want to provide an update to the city council and to the community on the status of Deer Path Streetscape project, both to inform the public on how it's going, but also what to expect for the coming month. And with that, I'm going to invite Superintendent of Engineering Byron Coots to the podium for a brief presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of city council. As, uh, as, uh, excuse me, sorry. As Jason just said, tonight we're giving a presentation on the Deer Path Streetscape. So it's been about a month since we've given the last update. Last month, Director Thomas gave the update. There's a lot that's actually been happening over the last month. If you drove here or walked here, you can see that it's changed a lot. The water main project is now complete. We're gearing up for the Streetscape that is going to start in about three or four weeks. So a lot of information to share tonight. We're going to start with a little video here. Let's see here. Got to get it started. Whoop. One second. I'll narrate a little bit here as it goes. Here's a video of some concrete being poured on Deer Path west of Oakwood. Gas main by North Shore Gas going in. Here's Campanella doing the water main at Western. Some concrete sidewalk going in west of Oakwood. Overview shot facing east. North Shore Gas working on the gas main. Striping going in west of Oakwood. I will say, just looking at that area and seeing the amount of equipment and different people out there, you just realize the amount of effort and coordination that goes into it. But there's been a lot of progress out there the last month, definitely. Let's see if I can get it to go to the next. Do you know how to get it to the next? No, you're good. Thank you. Sorry about that. So continuing, talking about the recent work completed, one of the big milestones, which is bold on there, is that we opened up Deer Path to two-way traffic, traffic from Green Bay to Oakwood. So the water main contractor was able to finish up end of March, early April, and we were able to open up that section. Even with MEED continuing going east, we were able to open up just that section, which has had some benefit to reducing traffic congestion a little bit. So we were really happy to be able to do that. The water main is fully live, including all the services. So from Green Bay to Western, the old main has been abandoned. Patches and permanent sidewalk poured west of Oakwood. The reason why I highlight it that way, or say permanent, is we're doing permanent sidewalk west of Oakwood, but east of Oakwood, knowing that we have the Streetscape project coming, we're doing like temporary sidewalks, a little bit thinner, in order to save some costs. And we're leaving some of the patches as gravel is where, as well, just knowing that that Streetscape's going to start in the next three or four weeks. And then North Shore Gas is continuing with their gas main replacement. So whenever we started the design years ago, we started reaching out to all the utility companies, encouraging them to upgrade their facilities so that they don't come to us asking for a permit after we finish the project. So that's why North Shore Gas is here doing that work. So we really appreciate them coming in and doing that. And now, looking at the schedule, I'll start here on the left. So April 7th to April 21st, North Shore Gas is going to continue, as I mentioned, eastbound traffic only from Oakwood to Western. That'll remain like that for the next couple of weeks. And then April 28th is when we tentatively think that the Streetscape contractor, DeLand, will probably mobilize. So the agreements are still being executed by IDOT. Their schedule is still being reviewed by us and IDOT. It hasn't been officially approved yet, but as of now, it shows them mobilizing the week of the 28th with pavement removal and tree removal starting. So just looking now at the right, at the schedule in blue, we're in April. Of course, we're nearing the end of the water main. Well, we're done with that portion. North Shore is finishing. And then over the next month, we'll be kind of transitioning into the Streetscape, the portion shown in, in green. And during that phase, and we'll have a lot more communication to follow, and there's been a lot of communication initiated already. But we'll be closing Deer Path completely from Oakwood to Western, as the figure shows. And like I mentioned, we'll be reaching out to the community more over the next couple of weeks. So in terms of general updates, we've had this slide on the last couple of presentations. And what we're trying to do is kind of show some of the miscellaneous coordination that goes into this as it relates to like logistics and just general coordination. So one of the items we did a month or two ago, when I think Director Thomas did the presentation, was add the high-visibility parking, just to highlight where people can park whenever they want to go to businesses. A new item is we purchased wagons for businesses to use. So you can kind of see in the bottom-left picture, there is UPS kind of hauling some packages across the street. Right now, they're kind of stationed at UPS, but we're looking at potentially locking those up with like bike locks on like maybe the Oakwood parking lot and then the bus lot parking lot for any businesses to use. So we're looking into that a little bit more. Continuing into monitoring the detours, traffic signals. We're, we're working on keeping the traffic signal at Westminster there for it to continue between the jobs. So we're, we're looking for the contractor to kind of transition that maintenance responsibility over. And then a big thing last week is we, the Thomas Engineer and the consultant that's helping us run the Streetscape, they were on-site. We walked all of the, uh, the whole corridor, met a lot of the businesses. So we're really starting to gear up that coordination. And continuing that communication, we'll continue going forward with the businesses in the chamber in general. And we'll touch on that a little bit in a few slides as well. Or actually, this slide. So open for business. So the communications department has helped us sort of, start a open-for-business campaign that's on the Lake Forest Love Blog. So basically highlighting some of these businesses in the area. And this is the first five. There's a few more as well on the horizon. In addition to the blog, the stories are also posted on our social media platforms, the newsletter, and then as well as the Lake Forest Love newsletter. So it's a good way for the city to basically highlight that, you know, there's still businesses here. We want to, you know, encourage people to shop those businesses during the project. And then Bank Lane Enhancement. So this is the block of Bank Lane just north of Deer Path to Market Square. We thought it was, would be important to talk about it tonight with it being adjacent to Deer Path. So design is actually going really well. Staff received the final plans last week, or two weeks ago. We completed our review last week. We're looking to actually issue plans for bid on Tuesday, with the bid opening being at the end of April, April 29th. And then the Public Works Committee Review on May 5th, with city council approval to follow on, on May 19th, with a tentative construction schedule from June 3rd to the end of October. And with that, I can take any questions. Yes?
Can you go back to the slide that showed the parking, the 15-minute Quick Stop?
Sure.
Locations? Where, um, so these are on the street?
Yeah, so the, there's two on Bank Lane just south of Deer Path.
Okay.
And then there is one north of Deer Path on Bank Lane. Both of those will not be available once the other projects start.
Start.
Because we're actually, I meant to bring it up during the presentation, Bank Land going south, it's currently one-way going south. We have to re-stripe it to two-way whenever Deer Path is closed, just because there won't be a way to feed cars to it. So in order to have it two-way, there'll be a little bit of a turnaround where the 15-minute parking spot is. But we have recently added some 15-minute parking spots in the bus lot. So east to Western there. And we'll continue to look for any opportunities to add 15-minute parking.
Are the parking lots free? Or do you still have to pay to park in any of the parking lots?
Um.
I don't know what the terms are.
You know, I believe it's free. Yeah. Yeah.
It's three hours?
Yeah, so the three-hour would be like basically the Oakwood lot, where you see the white P and then the yellow, and then the same on the bus lot. And then there's just a few spots that are specifically for like the shorter term, like 15 minutes, just to keep it, keep the spots.
But, but you don't need the hang tag or a
I don't believe so.
ticket on your dashboard or anything like that to park in the city lots for up to three hours. Okay. My last question is about the parking at First Midwest Bank or whatever it's called now. Has anybody asked them about letting people park in that parking lot?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have had the conversation at this point. I don't think there is.
There hasn't been any?
Yeah. There isn't anything going forward with.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions regarding this matter?
Okay. If there are no further questions, thank you, Byron.
Thank you.
The next item I have under my report is a follow-up from the March, I believe March 2nd meeting. If you recall, at that time, Police Chief Burke provided a status update on the schematic design process for the new police facility at 1925 Field Port. And one of the major items under discussion that night was evaluating several different alternative options for an indoor firing range that is critical for the police department's training needs. And since that meeting, another option had been identified, and I'll give credit to Alderman Walther for actually being the brainchild of that idea. And the, the concept as was initially proposed has since been researched both by the staff, internal project team, the project consultants, and very recently was vetted by the city managers advisory group that was convened. And so to provide a council with an update on that work that has occurred over the last month, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Burke.
Thanks, Jason. Mayor Tech, City Council. That's correct. We took Alderman Walther's idea and kind of ran with it this past month. We've asked the designers and architects at Corning Clark to see if, if this is possible and what does it do for us. And it, it checked a lot of boxes. In fact, it took every con of the three different ranges that presented, I presented a month ago, and basically wiped them out. So what it delivers is a range that's kind of integrated into one addition that was already going to take place. And the idea is basically to sink the range below the Sally Port and elongate the ramps that were going to be built in place for the vehicles to go up. Because if you can remember, the backside of the building, there is a difference in height, almost like a walkout basement. So if you're looking at this slide here, this is, this bigger square that you see here is where we want to propose to put the range in. And here you have the drive-up that goes into the Sally Port, and then there's the drive-down. So by sinking this range down, it eliminates any noise and vibration issues that we're concerned about. Ceiling height is there for a proper range. The length is there for a proper range. The air conditioning unit is placed farther away from the building. It's incorporated in, and we're not worried about any true issues when it comes to building and zoning in this area. So to kind of give you a better idea of what it might look like, this would be a rendition of a picture of, if you were to drive up the ramp, you'll actually, the car would travel across the roof of the range to get into the Sally Port. And then you have your garage door for the evidence room, which is straight down here. And if a vehicle were to come in here for training, so for example, if an outside agency did come and they wanted to use our range, you could pull in that lower garage, take a hard right, and at the entrance to the range, there'd be two five-foot steel doors that would open up so you could move a vehicle onto the range, close those doors up, and they could train and come and go without having any effect on any of our operations. Just a different, different view to kind of show you the, the idea that we've been talking with Kathy and Jim Lockafer about adding some landscaping around here to mitigate further any issues of what it might look like from a different building, whether it be from Pfizer or the college campus back there or the high school, and also do kind of take away from what it might look like to the neighbors. But if you can see from this view, this is where the air conditioning unit would go, the air handler for the range. It's pushed farther away from the building. Here's your entrance to the Sally Port. There's still plenty of room for the vehicles on patrol to come in and out of the building. All we did was basically punch this rampway out a little farther, and the vehicles can come across the roof and then down. Here's another version of it from the backside of the building. This is showing some added landscaping in addition to what's already there. But we're really happy with this idea. It seems to be working really well. It incorporates anything, and we're not anticipating any other issues. And cost-wise, which is really important, it's essentially the same, if not a little cheaper than what it would have been to build the range in the basement. And we get to retain all of our indoor parking and most of the outdoor parking. So we still keep our parking counts that we need for the building. Does anybody have any questions? Alice?
Can you just explain the back entrance versus the front entrance? See the curve? Yeah. So what's the difference between the two?
We just wanted to have one-way traffic. One of the early ideas was the cars would pull into the Sally Port, and they would back down a ramp. And very early on, we were meeting with the city managers advisory council. We threw that idea out. We didn't want officers backing down a ramp. So basically just creating one-way traffic. Any vehicle, a police car or ambulance would come in, and everybody exits the same way to keep it universal.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? No, I'd just like to, oh, John.
No, just a quick comment. And thanks to Alderman Walther. He and I had the privilege of serving on the, the city managers advisory council. And it was the one element of the project that just, in my opinion, wasn't world-class. Like everything else we had and everything else we did, thanks to the size of the building, was able to work perfectly, except it felt like we were shoehorning the, the shooting range inside the garage of the basement, or garage in the basement. And thanks to Rich's epiphany at 2:45 a.m., we were able to come up, he was able to come up with a really creative design, which I think is great. And, and clearly, Chief, as you said, solved all the issues that, that most people were concerned about. So thanks, Rich.
Other comments or questions? Okay, I, just one comment. I think it's a great example of validating the process. You know, you have eyes looking at this. Everybody's receptive to ideas. And you come up with a project that, you know, is, is better than what we imagined it would be at the beginning. So stick with it and thanks.
Thank you.
And I'll just briefly add to the mayor's comment. At the conclusion of the last advisory group meeting, it was determined by the group, given where we're at in the design process and how relatively that process has unfolded, but for the range issue, that it was probably not necessary for the group to meet again. And that's pretty customary for us in these groups. Usually they're limited to three, no more than four meetings. And so I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank all of the members of the advisory group who volunteered their time to help participate in this process. And as the mayor alluded to, again, in keeping with a fairly long history of these processes, whether they more recently be with Deer Path Park, with North, Lake Forest Northwestern Hospital, with the Deer Path Streetscape Project. Lake Forest is really blessed to have volunteers who are not just talented, but bring unique skill sets and expertise to some of these issues and ultimately contribute to making these better projects. And there's no doubt that happened in this case as well. So I just wanted to make sure I took the opportunity to thank all of the volunteers who participated in that process. And if there are no other questions on the police project, then the third and final item I have tonight is an item that's actually included on your omnibus agenda, and that is a request to approve the purchase and installation of new playground structure at Forest Park Beach. And the reason I wanted to highlight this is that the final selection for the structure itself came at the, as a, as a result of a pretty significant community engagement process. And it was one of, it was a unique and fun opportunity for us to let the public have an active role in designing the playground that will go in later this year. And so while the item is included on your omnibus agenda, I've asked Superintendent of Parks and Forestry Chuck Myers to give a little background on the project, the community engagement process, and then timelines moving forward.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So exciting project coming up later this year. So the playground was built in 2004. We typically replace our playgrounds in about 20 years. So it is time. The current one is meant to serve children that are five to 12 with some of the elements, and then two to five with some of the other elements. And that is what we're going to do with the new one as well. So our city staff put together a team made up of different staff members from different departments and a consultant to work together to come up with a couple of design options. We also looked at the location and determined that the new playground would be going into approximately the same spot where it is now. So both design options were shared with the community for their feedback. We put out a survey back last summer in July and August, and we received over 570 responses on that. People gave their thoughts and their suggestions on those two options. And in the end, the choice was for Option A, which was the nautical-themed one. And this is, this is actually the design that we're going with, but you can see the ship and the fish, that kind of theme with it. So we did take that input from the community, though, and we thought it was important to not just take Option A and run with it. We took a lot of their different opinions on what they wanted. So with that, we looked at, we wanted, we heard a lot of people said that they wanted to make sure it was accessible to everyone, no matter what their need, special needs, or adults, children, anyone could access it. So we wanted universal access to be part of that. They also told us clearly that they wanted to expand sensory play. So we did include imaginative, imaginative play features, such as the cozy spaces that were created with that fish feature that I'll talk about in a second. But, and also added things like bongos and chimes and things like that to make it more interesting and expand that sensory element. So we also heard that a lot of people wanted to make sure we had more protection from the sun. So we doubled the number of shade structures on the equipment. And then finally, we, we did hear a lot, people wanted more climbers. So we do have a lot with the slides, all the platforms with climbing. But that fish that I was talking about, that was actually in the other option, but it was such a popular feature, we decided to scale it back, make it a little bit smaller, has the same kind of feature to it, and we incorporated it into this final design. So once we had put all that together, did the redesign, we sent it back to the community and through a survey online and heard from 50 responses on that one. And it did affirm that they liked this design. So one other thing that we looked at on this one, we knew that the playground out there was in pretty good shape. It's been maintained well, but it is at its time for replacement. So we did reach out to, sorry, I didn't change that. We did reach out to a company called Kids Around the World. So it's an organization that repurposes playgrounds for underserved communities around the world, actually. So they came out this past winter, and they identified two of the larger structures that were in good enough shape that they could reuse those. So that will involve removing the pieces, and they'll refurbish them and reinstall them some, in another community somewhere in the world. So our staff will be assisting them with that, helping them to, to transport. It is a bit difficult to get to the parking lot, so we're going to assist them with that part of it. And that will end up reducing the overall cost of the playground because of disposal fees and things like that. So it's a nice thing that we think is kind of a win-win for everyone on that. So if approved tonight, we would be purchasing the equipment in May. And then right after Labor Day, we would start the demolition and the movement of the pieces that will be reused. And then we expect that installation will start right after that. So the, it is a little bit more complicated because it is on the beach and water table's high and all that. So bit more of a complicated project than some of our playgrounds. So we're anticipating it being finished in October, though. So with that.
Are there questions or comments? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Very good. We'll move on to the next item, which is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Is there anyone present who would like to address the council at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. The next item is committee reports. We'll start with Public Works Committee. We will begin with the Owani Lane Water Main Replacement, which Byron Coots will again present.
Good evening again. Yes, so tonight I'll be now presenting the Owani Lane Water Main Replacement Project. So before we jump into, into the details of the project, we thought it would be a good idea to basically show you how we actually select a given street or block for replacing the water main. So looking at the map at the right is all of our different water main. The different colors are just different sizes. We have 170 miles of water main, and there's a lot of numerous variables that we look at and consider during the budget process whenever we select water mains for replacement. Some of those are the pipe size. So some of the water mains, four-inch, six-inch, might be undersized and need to be upsized for water flow. The, the pipe material may be an older material that we no longer use. The number of breaks, that's something we deal with quite a bit, especially the last couple winters where operations may have a couple segments that are just really prone to breaks. Water quality, basically that means like how well a given section of water main kind of moves the water around. Fire flow, and then timing with other projects. So kind of looking at the, the images that the with other projects, so, kind of looking at the, the images at the bottom in orange, we basically look back at our water distribution studies, so we had a full citywide comprehensive report in 2020, which gives us a lot of recommendations based off of those variables that I mentioned, we also have the Central Business District Report from a year or two ago, which we also look at for water main replacements in the CBD. We cross-reference that list with other CIP projects, that's kind of where the timing component comes in, we don't want to resurface the street and then five, 10 years later come in and do a water main project. We coordinate with Operations Section, Sections, so, specifically Water Sewer, they're helping us review all this as well, and then that ultimately becomes the annual recommended water main program that we, you know, add to the, you know, add in during the budget process every year. So, now, looking at the specific project in question tonight, the Owani Lane Water Main Replacement, so, I was speaking about timing, that's one of the items, or one of the reasons why we're looking at this project now, is we're trying to time it with some adjacent work on Owani Lane and Owani Road for the Storm Sewer Project there, but also, this stretch of water main is from 1927, it's undersized, it's four-inch water main, we would typically have like a six-inch water main for this type of residential street, so, with all those components there, that's why we thought it was time to replace this section of water main. We actually had this planned with the Deerpath Water Main Project three or four years ago, that was on this stretch, but we weren't able to do it due to budget constraints. As I mentioned, we're going to time it with the adjacent Storm Sewer Project, so whenever we paved the road, we want it to basically be seamless, we don't want a resident that lives there to know any difference of if it was paved by the water main project or the Storm Sewer Project, we want it to be one seamless paving operation. The project also includes 12 valves throughout the city, so basically, in addition to any valves that are part of this project, that is important for any time we have water main breaks, or we're doing like a project like we were here, the Deerpath Water Main, where having those valves at work are really important in those instances, so you don't have to go too far out whenever you're trying to isolate a water main break or replace a section of pipe. The budget is from the water fund, it was Owani Road, budget was $500,000, and then the valve repairs was shown at $165,000, for a total of $665,000. We received three bids, with the lowest bid being from D-Land Construction, so, we do have a lot of confidence in D-Land as it relates to hardscape projects, sidewalk projects, streetscape projects, they're trying to get into the underground industry, they weren't able to provide three references, so, if we're working with like a new contractor, that's something that we typically ask, and they just could not provide it at this time. If they're able to get that experience in the future, we'd be more than open of having them bid on future underground projects, but at this time, they just didn't have the relevant experience, so we're recommending the DeMayo Brothers as the lowest responsible bid, which is about $5,000 or more, they're in town right now actually working on the Owani Storm Sewer Project, they've also done other large projects in town such as Baroque, which you're all familiar with. The schedule for the project would be starting sometime in early May, and we're looking to complete it at the end of June, which is around the time that all the curb and paving for the adjacent Storm Sewer Project will be completed, so with that, I can take any questions.
Are there questions? Comments? I do have one quick question for you, and it relates to D-Land, so, D-Land is going to do the Streetscape Project, correct?
Correct.
So, I just wanted to make sure there was a question about their experience here that doesn't apply to the Streetscape Project. That concern.
Yeah, correct, so, I mean, we have no concern as it relates to the Streetscape Project, it's just with this being solely an underground project that their experience doesn't align with that, for any underground that's part of the Streetscape Project, there could be subcontractors that could be doing that work.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because that's popping up soon, too. Okay. Anything else? Very good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Gordon Community Center Patio and Drop-In Center, which will be presented by Jim Lockafer, Assistant Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I know we're at the tail end of a few presentations here, at the front end of the agenda, I have a couple slides that I'll move through quickly, so, with the Gordon Patio and Drop-In Center Project, actually two projects from a budgetary perspective, but from a bidding perspective, we bid them together, close proximity, similar work, it made all the sense in the world to do that, so we had one contractor. So, starting with the patio, and actually the Drop-In Center as well, there's some longstanding stormwater issues, and for the patio specifically, the existing patio is actually pitched towards the building in a few areas, which has created some long-time and regular maintenance needs to the masonry, but also the exterior doors, and the pictures do probably the best job, and if you see that, it's actually holding water, and if you look at the door at, on the bottom picture, you can see some deterioration there, as well as in the top picture, the left-hand side there, some more deterioration, so we're excited to correct that issue. And the project originated with us replacing the patio in kind, and during those preliminary conversations with Gordon's staff, they came to us to express interest in a very slight expansion to support some improved use, so, this project does incorporate increasing the patio size from its very small 420 square feet to a modest, you know, about 300 square feet increase to a total of 725 square feet. The materials, this is within a historic district, historic building, we're looking to keep them the exact same, that was a very important component as part of this project, and as part of that process, we did receive a certificate of appropriateness, it was granted by the Historic Preservation Commission about a year ago, back in February, Director Zerniak was very helpful in supporting us in Public Works navigating that process. Just really quickly, kind of blown-up image, on the left there, you've got the existing patio, 420 square feet, as council most likely knows, you have the steps that kind of lead directly into the steward room doors, as you go up the stairs, you hit those doors immediately. The biggest change in terms of design element to increase the size, the stairs are actually offset now, which was an important thing from not only city staff perspective, but also Gordon, they were very supportive of that change, too, a lot of times, I think, when people park in the parking lot, they may confuse it as just another entry point into the building, this helps clean that up. And then switching to the Drop-In Center, Gordon uses the Drop-In Center, it's that center picture there, which, if you look at the image, probably a little difficult to see, you have the patio kind of north there, and then there's a sidewalk that ascends east, it's about a 50-foot distance away, and that vestibule, again, right in the center, is currently sitting on a concrete pad with no footings, and what that has done is, water just comes into contact with the bottom portion of that vestibule, where you can see on the right picture there, it's deteriorating, and it's pretty much throughout that entire area, where what we're looking to accomplish here is to install those footings, restore the bottom portion of the vestibule, correct that deterioration, and then it should stand for many, many years to come where we don't have to return, so, that's another one that we're very excited about. So, from a budget perspective, we do have a grand total of $350,000, that was budgeted. Patio, $200,000 total, and that's broken out, from the city standpoint, we have $130,000 funded, and then Gordon, to support the expansion, $70,000. The Drop-In Center, that's solely city, $150,000. You can see on the bid table there, we received two bids, with our low bid coming from Ephraim Carlson Construction, $385,000 over budget, I'll touch on that in a second, but before I do, Ephraim Carlson has performed favorable work for the city in the past, most recently the Public Safety Building, PD Break Room Area, and then, as well as some golf course restoration work when the pipe burst up in the attic there, they completed that project. With the project being over budget, you know, the 350, 385,000 base, but then we are seeking that 10% contingency, as we do with most Public Works projects, we are over, and with that, as included in the write-up, and with any project that we're over on, there's that supplemental appropriation language to be submitted to City Council if it's wound up being needed, but in this case, we feel comfortable, very comfortable, we actually reviewed a chart with the Public Works Committee at the March 17th meeting, looking at all of our Public Works FY25 projects, and where those project budgets are at, as well as the contingency balances, we're feeling very good that there's some savings across a lot of different projects that will cover this specific project overage. So, with that, I do have the action item language, which is in the omnibus, but we are seeking bid approval to Ephraim Carlson for their $385,000 bid, when you tack on the 10% contingency, $423,000 total, and again, that is on the omnibus, but at this point, happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lockafer? Alderman Weber.
I just have a quick comment, and that's going back quite a number of years, used to utilize the Children's Learning Center at Gordon, and for 10 years, the water and the ice would build up, and they're salting, it really was kind of a hazard with parents coming in with their small children down that walkway and seeing that deterioration over time, so I'm really pleased to see this project come to fruition.
I'll stew, thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, and I think that is item 13 on our omnibus, just for everybody's reference. We'll move on to items for omnibus vote consideration, of which there are 18 this evening. So, if any of the Aldermen have any item that they would like removed or taken separately, please let me know after I complete reading the items. There we go. Item one, approval of the March 17th, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes to include a brief overview from the Citadel Theater's founder and artistic director, Scott Phelps, which was apparently not captured at last meeting. Item two, approval of the check register for the period of February 15th through March 21st, 2025. Item three, approval of a resolution reallocating 2025 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove, Illinois. Item four, approval to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Landscape Structures for the purchase and installation of playground equipment and surfacing at Forest Park Beach in the amount of $544,754, to include a 10% contingency in the amount of $55,246, for a total cost of $600,000. Item five, approval of the annual repurchasing for fiscal year 2026. Item six, approval of an athletic field rental fee waiver to Lake Forest Baseball Association for a total amount of $13,862. Item seven, approval to award a one-year contract for Recreation Department Program Bussing Services to North Shore Transit in the amount of $107,545,000. Item eight, approval to award a contract to Life Fitness for purchase of cardio equipment in the amount of $36,497. Item nine, authorization to dispose of city property to the highest bidder via govdeals.com for the sale of the 2010 CAT Skid steer in the amount of $21,200. Item 10, approval of a purchase of a replacement fire department vehicle to Carl Chevrolet in the amount of $53,500. Item 11, approval of the Public Works Committee recommendation of an award of bid to Ephraim Carlson Construction for the Elowet Door Improvement Project in the amount of $38,000, to include a 10% contingency in the amount of $4,000, for a grand total cost of $42,000. Item 12, approval of a purchase to replace a backhoe to Westside Tractor Sales in the amount of $224,400. Item 13, approval of a Public Works Committee recommendation of an award of bid to Ephraim Carlson Construction for the Gordon Community Center Patio and Drop-In Center Projects in the amount of $385,000, to include a 10% contingency in the amount of $38,000, for a grand total cost of $423,000. Item 14, approval of a second-year renewal with Schroder &amp; Schroder Incorporated for the 2025 Concrete Streets, Curb, and Sidewalk Replacement Project, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed $215,000. Item 15, award the low responsible bid for the Owani Lane Water Main Replacement Project and Valve Repairs Project to DeMayo Brothers Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $579,800, and a 10% contingency in the amount of $57,980, for a total project cost of $637,780. Item 16, approval of Phase III Construction Engineering Services for the Safe Routes to School Project to Clark Dietz Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in amount not to exceed $43,100. Item 17, approval to purchase the next phase of Verkata Security Cameras for our existing security camera system from Modern Media Technologies in the amount of $70,970. And finally, item 18, approval to purchase the Verkata Access Control System for the Lake Forest Recreation Center from Modern Media Technologies in the amount of $90,530. Are there any items that the council would like taken separately? Perfect. All right. At this time, can I have a motion to approve omnibus items as presented?
So moved. Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Goshkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Wald.
Aye.
Seven yays, zero nay, motion carries.
Very good. Next item is old business, we'll begin with consideration of a recommendation from staff to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Himley Horn Engineering Consultants in the amount of $18,497, with a provision for unforeseen supplemental work, for a total not to exceed $24,999. How strategic, the city manager's spending authority. This item will be presented by Catherine Zerniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just to step back for a moment, at the end of last year, the Plan Commission held two very well-attended public hearings, based on direction from the council, to consider a code amendment to identify permitted locations for wireless infrastructure in the Fourth Ward. Currently, the code does not identify any permitted locations in that area. Given the interest in this item, the City Council in November decided to table this item, and directed us to engage an independent consultant to really step back and look at this issue more broadly, and we have been working on that. The direction from the City Council really was to find a way to optimize coverage, capacity, and quality of wireless service with, while at the same time minimizing any visual impact. So, that is the overall goal. Again, just to step back for a moment, I know this is a little difficult to see, this is a map from our zoning code, the areas in red are identified in the zoning code as permitted locations for wireless infrastructure, whether that be standalone towers, antenna on buildings, in addition to these identified locations, a number of years ago, the City Council amended the zoning code to also allow distributed antenna systems, which means broadly throughout the community, the council approved lower-level antennas to be mounted on utility poles and light poles, in an effort to encourage wireless companies to build out their systems in the community. The area for permitted towers and antennas on rooftops, as you can see, does not identify any locations at all, generally in the Fourth Ward. We've heard from a number of businesses, in fact, just this morning, I heard from another business located on Waukegan Road, asking about the status of wireless service improvements, but we've heard from schools, we've heard from residents, but the Plan Commission also heard at the public hearings from residents who questioned whether in fact there really was a need, so that's part of the reason the council tabled this item. So, again, this is a map of the permitted locations, not all of these permitted locations have wireless facilities in them, but if a company chose to move forward with one of these locations, we could do so in a streamlined fashion because they are approved locations. they are approved locations. The next map, again, difficult to see, but those dots identify locations where antennas on rooftops or standalone telecommunications towers are located. So again, you see a dearth of locations in the fourth ward. What we understand is that as a result, this area is being served by pulling from some of the facilities in other locations, both inside the city and outside the city, in Lincolnshire and in Bannockburn. So based on the council's direction in November, the city issued a request for proposals for an independent wireless consultant. We actually issued that RFP three separate times. The first time, we didn't get many responses. We contacted, made direct contacts with a number of companies. The second time, we received responses. Many of those who responded, all of those who responded, really had some affiliation or close connection with either a tower builder or a wireless company. So we fine tuned the language again and issued the RFP a third time. We received four responses. As you can see, a wide range of costs associated with those responses. Some of those companies came in with a solution at the front end, and those are some that you see at the higher end of the cost. Given the public interest in this and the amount of public testimony, it seemed important to come in at the beginning and first identify the problem and not immediately jump to a solution. Kimble Horn, which is a large engineering firm, has a section that is specifically dedicated to telecommunications. We recently worked with Kimble Horn in the Central Business District. They did an exhaustive evaluation of the infrastructure throughout the Central Business District. We found them to be efficient, have a significant amount of expertise, and they communicated very well with staff throughout the process. We did, as the city normally does, we had a group of staff, interdisciplinary group of staff from police, fire, public works, and community development. We all evaluated the proposals and agreed that Kimble Horn really presented the firm that could perform this initial analysis. And it may be an initial analysis. We may come back to you with a second phase of this work, depending on what we find out. But based on the staff group, we are recommending that we do go with the lowest responsible bid, based on the fact that they are qualified, they are known to the city, they are the lowest bid, and they are independent from any tower builder or telecommunications company. What we will be expecting them to do is really three things. Analyze wireless service with a focus on the fourth ward, but also more broadly. But our understanding is we really need to look at the fourth ward and finding out where service in that area is coming from before we identify other areas as being deficient. We need to think about the most efficient and effective way to fill in essentially our grid of wireless infrastructure. Assuming that the consultant identifies a deficiency, either in the fourth ward or somewhere else, then we would look to the consultant as part of this work to identify options, to look at all available technologies, not only for the perspective of how can wireless service be provided, but also from the perspective of what is a company willing to build out, given the number of customers, the number of businesses, our density of population. So it's not only what's technically feasible, but also what is economically feasible and what can we expect a company to do. The city cannot mandate that a company build out using a certain technology. So identify options, technology options, types of infrastructure, whether it's distributed antennas, whether it's a new tower, whether something can be accommodated on an existing building, co-located antenna on an existing building, and to identify feasible locations. Again, what locations are likely to provide a wide range of service and be something that companies are going to be willing to invest in. And then third, really look at what is the role for the city? What role can the city play to facilitate improvements in telecommunications service, whether that's amending the city code to streamline the approval process to identify more locations, whether it's use of city property or city facilities, or there may be other roles for the city. But the city is not a provider of telecommunications services. So we need to look at ways we can incent or facilitate companies coming in. This matter is before you, despite the fact that it is within the city manager's authority to approve this contractual amount. Because you directed us to issue this RFP, we are back before you. And although the 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 cost of this study, $18,497, again, given the fact that this is below the city manager's authority, we are asking for authority acknowledgement of expenditure of up to $24,999 so that we have some flexibility. If if there are some minor changes that need to expand this study, if there is, if this identifies a significant need for additional study, we will certainly be back before you. The timeline, assuming your approval tonight, is that we would expect the consultant to present us with a report in June. We will present that to you publicly, make it available to residents and interested businesses, and then come to you with recommended next steps as recommended by the consultants. I would be happy to answer any questions. If you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to approve a motion authorizing the city manager as follows.
Are there questions or comments? Alderman Walther.
Could you just share with us either content that was in their proposal or follow-up work that you executed, where you interviewed maybe some of their past customers, or they provided information about some of their past customers, and the level of satisfaction that those customers received from Kimberly Horn on a similar project? Could you opine along those lines, please?
Sure. Kimberly Horn had a number of projects that they hadn't been involved in and demonstrated through to completion satisfaction on the part of municipalities, different approaches. Some municipalities became much more engaged in incenting telecommunications providers. In some of those cases, Kimberly Horn actually worked beyond the initial study process, but worked with tower building companies and telecommunications companies to actually essentially put a deal together. So very satisfactory performance. And again, our own experience with Kimberly Horn as a very sophisticated and large engineering firm gives us confidence that this being one of their many sections is certainly well-supported by the overall company.
Thank you, Kathy.
Alderman Weber.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. I just wanted to say that I'm pleased to hear this next step in the process. I know tonight we have some Ward Four members, and it's great to see people engaged with this. And as we move forward to really find the challenges that we have and really come to a conclusion in where we can be better.
My notes.
Director Cerniak, when the, I want to clarify a point that was made in our agenda concerning the scope of the RFP. It talks about the initial focus being on the fourth ward. Will this initial study evaluate anything outside the fourth ward, or that's outside the scope of this?
The the initial focus will be on the fourth ward, because as we understand it, in order to evaluate other parts of the community, we really need to understand where the service from the fourth ward is coming from. But yes, this initial work will go beyond the fourth ward once we understand if there are other sites in the community that are being compromised essentially by the lack of infrastructure in the fourth ward.
Well, to be, I guess to clarify my question, that uptown, the cellular service uptown is also considered fairly poor. And so as I understand, the scope of this this report will not delve into any deficiencies outside of the fourth ward.
My expectation is that we'll get a high-level overview of other areas. I don't know that the Central Business District will look specifically at sites, but yes, there will be a general look at the overall community, first to assess assess overall wireless service, but then a real focus on the fourth ward. I do think, as I mentioned, you may see a recommendation come out of the study for an additional phase. This phase is really setting the groundwork. What overall service do we have? Are there areas where there are deficiencies? Are there areas that are being compromised by lack of infrastructure throughout the community? So I think we'll at least get a first look, and we'll know if some more in-depth study is needed.
Thank you, Kathy.
Alderman Gashkarion.
Yeah, you know, to that point, thanks, Ted. I mean, this is a citywide issue, and I think we all have to approach it as such. I mean, certainly, we're very sensitive to neighbors and particular neighborhoods, but we have to understand this impacts the entire community. So I think there are questions that we have that, well, we don't even know some of the questions we're supposed to be asking. So having an engineering firm look at this and putting it out in a clear manner with a broad overview, I think it's going to give us the opportunity to really see what some of the possible solutions are. I agree with you. Having a company offering up a solution before they've even identified the problem is foolish. And taking a step back, as planned did, and then going down this pathway seems to be the most practical way of doing it. And realizing that we're not just concerned with just one neighborhood, or one block, or one street. We're concerned about, and that's what our charge is up here, the overall good of the entire community. So it sounds like we're going in that direction. So I'm pleased to hear that. Thank you.
Are there others? Alderman Powers.
Kathy, the code seems to be pretty limiting. Obviously, there's that main big gap in what depicted as the fourth ward. Is that just because at the time council approved the last code that that wasn't an issue? I mean, I've been here for 30 years in cellphone service, particularly in the second ward where I am is terrible as well. So my question is really, why is it so limiting? And why wouldn't we be taking a look at all of Lake Forest, including non-public property in terms of if if somebody had desire to want to put a tower in their parking lot, and that solves the problem, is that getting caught, is that being captured in this assessment?
Some of these sites are on private property.
Okay.
Woodland Academy, the rooftop unit.
Five-Eighth Building, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bank Lane and right out here, the hospital. So this does identify some private properties. Why this area was not identified? Probably because of the population density, probably because when this was initially created, the business district there was probably less active. But probably most important, when this was created, the number of devices or the activity that people were doing nonstop on their devices was was much different. Again, the most recent amendment to the code was to streamline the process for distributed antenna systems. We've had some of those go in, but most of the companies, because of the low-density population in Lake Forest, don't really want to spend their money building it out. If the council chooses to amend the code, we can identify private properties or public properties.
Thank you.
Other than the distributed antenna, the actually in the second ward or near the second ward, the other amendment that was done was Woodlands Academy. When Old Main existed, there were a number of providers on top of Old Main. You'll recall that. And the code.
Visually see it every day.
Yeah. And this, the code was amended to allow a standalone tower once Old Main was taken down. And that was very controversial as well.
Great. Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions? Okay, then I have a comment. And I would like to say this, although I don't think this is covered in Phase One here, I do think the logical extension of this process is at some point to identify what's required to provide high-level uniform cell coverage throughout the city. That's not necessarily something that we can accomplish, but we should at least know what infrastructure would be necessary for that to be the case, that no matter where you were in the city, you could get your internet service, your, you know, internet-based TV services, whatever, equivalent to what somebody else in the city gets. I think it's pretty ridiculous that a community like this has service of the level that we have. We need to study and understand what would be required for us to get there before we make any decisions on actually getting there. And those are the phases that you reference of potentially following this. Okay. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the public on this matter? Okay. Seeing none, then I would like to ask for a motion to authorize city manager to enter into a contract for wireless consulting services with Kimble Horn in an amount not to exceed $18,497 with a provision for unforeseen supplemental work for a total not to exceed $24,999, the city manager's spending authority.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarion.
Aye.
Alderman Levert.
Abstain.
Abstain. Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Waldor.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Six yea, one abstention. Motion carries.
Okay, very good. We move on to new business, of which there is none this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask the council members if they have any additional items that they would like to discuss.
Mayor Tagg, yes, I would.
Alderman Notes.
Thank you. With the weather warming up in town, I've taken more than a few opportunities to get down to the beach. And it's honestly the same, a similar situation year after year at this time, with a lot of residents bringing their dogs down to the beach. And predecessor councils have determined it was appropriate to not allow dogs at the beach. And I think it's either largely misunderstood among our fellow residents or ignored that they cannot bring their pets to the beach. And I wanted to, I asked staff if they would present maybe some of the background context for maybe why the policy was in place to begin with, and if there are opportunities, whether we need to strengthen enforcement, modify our expectations, or enhance messaging, or as I said, enforcement. So just, I'd appreciate any.
Sure, yeah. I'm happy to offer my two cents on that. And as Alderman noted, dogs, really, all pets are currently prohibited by code at Lake Forest Beach, whether they're leashed or not. And we do have, I think, fairly significant signage to that effect, both at the bottom of the two, the north and south vehicular access roads. There is signage at the bottom of the Forest Park staircase, if you're going down the stairs, and signage on the north pavilion as well. So there is a fairly significant amount of signage that does, does reference the prohibition of pets at the beach. Enforcement of that code provision, I think, is pretty strong from the city during the peak summer months, from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And the reason behind that is because the beach is staffed during those months, and we tend to find far fewer individuals coming down with pets during those times. It's also just very crowded down at the beach. You might find the occasional dog owner and their pet at, you know, six in the morning in the middle of the summer, but but certainly not as much during the day. Admittedly, I would say enforcement's been much softer during those non-peak months. So fall, winter, and spring enforcement is really more complaint-based than any active patrolling of the area. You know, we do understand that there are regularly people who take their dogs down to the beach. It's been a problem, as you would, or it's been an issue, I should say, for several years. But I would acknowledge both just my own anecdotal observations, but what I've heard from heard from residents and from staff as well. I do think that there's likely been an uptick in the number of dogs at the beach since the boardwalk project was completed last summer. And of course, the whole intent behind that project was to increase accessibility at the beach. We didn't mean that for dogs, but needless to say, it has made it a lot easier for people who are just walking throughout the neighborhood to easily get from the top of the bluff at Forest Park down to the beach. And so I do think that could be a potential unintended consequence of what was otherwise a remarkable project. So that's all to say, if city council is receiving any additional complaints about the number of dogs at the beach, whether they're leashed or not, if council wants to provide direction to staff to more aggressively enforce existing code provisions, we can certainly do so. The last thing I'll just note in terms of, you said, the history behind it, of course, not having been here, I think it's fairly straightforward that the reasons dogs are prohibited at the beach are, one, that by the nature of what, you know, pet owners would be bringing their dogs down, therefore, they're usually unleashed so that they can go in the water. That's the point. And then to just be frank about it, I think there are concerns about irresponsible dog owners who are not picking up after their pets, and we do know that is an issue around town, and we see it in our parkways, at city parks. That's problematic enough when people aren't picking up after their pets. Down at the beach, where you have children and adults playing barefoot, I think it only amplifies the problem, and so I think that was likely the motivation behind prohibiting dogs at the beach. So with that, again, if the council wants to provide some direction to staff that we need to more aggressively enforce existing code provisions, we're happy to do that. I'll turn it over to the group for any thoughts, discussion, or if I can answer any other questions.
Are there any thoughts, comments? Alderman Walther.
In your comments, you mentioned signage, but I think all the signage you mentioned was at the lower level. I thought I saw one of those tent stand signs at the top of the boardwalk, but if there is no signage at the top, let's go ahead and put some signage.
Yeah, and that's certainly something that can be explored. I may look to Kathy on this one to provide a little bit of history about signage at Forest Park, when the park was being reimagined to what it is today. You know, that was, for those that were around, that was a years-long community conversation, and there were numerous aspects of it that were at times contentious. Signage is certainly an issue that is a little contentious, and so Kathy, maybe I'll ask you to expound on that.
It was contentious. I think there was concern about not having Forest Park be the Park of No. There were some early signs that said, and I don't remember exactly what, but no, 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 no.
No fun of any kind.
Yeah, something like that.
No excitement.
And obviously, the Forest Park Board was very involved, spent hours upon hours. We had multiple public hearings, and the signage was very carefully considered. Of the two biggest complaints we receive in this community about lighting and about signage, people are very sensitive to those two. So I think the signage in Forest Park is understated. If there's some temporary signage, a sandwich board sign that maybe communicates something on a temporary basis, I think you could do that, but I think if you're going to significantly change the signage in Forest Park, you probably need to involve the Forest Park Board. The Historic Preservation Commission was involved. So I don't know if there's anything else you wanted me to cover.
Yeah, no, and I think that pretty well covers it, and I will say too, that I think maybe as a first step before considering conversations about permanent signage, I think a robust public relations and education campaign is a first step. This is purely speculative for me to say, but in my estimation, the majority of people who are bringing their dogs down to the beach are probably aware of what the city's policy is. Again, if you're down there enough, there are more than enough signs. It's hard to miss them if you're a regular visitor to the beach. My sense is that it's not as much ignorance of the policy as just sort of defiance of the policy. But I think if it's, again, the direction of the council tonight, to see more aggressive enforcement, I think starting a public relations and education campaign utilizing our e-news, utilizing social media, both to remind people of the existing code provision as it's written, but also to notify the community that more aggressive enforcement is coming is an appropriate first step.
Alderman Weber.
I would support additional enforcement. I think the communication's a great strategy, but I would agree that the people who are bringing their dogs are going to bring their dogs, even if there are signs up there, even if they're getting an email reminder, and I think that the only way that they'll stop is if you stop them and say no, much like e-scooters and bicycles in downtown Lake Forest. And so I think the only way is to catch them in the act, you put up like a flock camera, walking down the boardwalk, you know, you're on camera, we'll catch you down at the bottom. But I think in all seriousness, if we have a rule, we have to stick to the rule.
Sure.
And I think that there are a lot of issues when you have dogs off leashes, period. The liability is so much higher, so we should be concerned with that.
Alderman Powers.
I would just like to add, I'd like to appeal to the community to be more respectful of other people. I'm there all year round. There's older people walking on the path. Oftentimes in the winter, dogs are not on leashes. I'm a dog lover, had my dear golden retriever tiger for 14 years. I miss it, but that's the only place in Lake Forest where you can't have your dog. You can go anywhere else. So I think at this point, if we can just appeal to people being respectful of other people's interests and desires and safety, we'll be a hell of a lot better off.
Other comments or questions?
Then if it pleases the council, I think what we'll do is start within the next few days, the education campaign. We'll also begin increasing our presence and enforcement, maybe over the, similar to the approach we took with the e-scooters. Over the next week or two, we can begin just by issuing warnings as people, in theory, familiarize themselves with current code provisions, and then in the coming weeks can pivot to issuing citations.
What are the fines if you have a dog at the beach?
So it operates as a graduated fine structure. You can jump in, chief, if I'm wrong, but my recollection is that it's $100 for the first offense, $250 for the second offense, and $750 for third and subsequent offenses. And so it is meant to serve as a deterrent for habitual offenders.
I think that's important to highlight in the communications that go out.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. I think you have your marching orders, then.
Got it.
All right. Is there anything else the Alderman would like to discuss before we ask for a motion to adjourn? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.